Weaver City Council Meeting of November 18, 2013, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of October 28, 2013?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion to approve, second by Mr. Stark, or any changes to the minutes? Please poll the council.
Oh, you need to raise your hands.
Because the things aren't...
To...
They're not correct.
Yes, yeah, all in favor, raise your hand.
Right.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yeah, okay. Opposed, there's nobody, okay. Motion carries 7-0.
Ceremonies, which is going to be a swearing-in of the new candidates, of the new officers, and also the recognition of the outgoing officers.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, let us start with Ms. Joyce J., Mayor J., come up, please, so we can get this microphone.
Are we looking good? Hello?
All right, please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Joyce J...
I, Joyce J.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare...
Do solemnly and sincerely declare...
And affirm that I will support the Constitution...
And affirm that I will support the Constitution...
And laws of the United States...
And laws of the United States...
The state of Colorado...
The state of Colorado...
The charter and ordinances of the city...
The charter and ordinances of the city...
And will faithfully perform...
And will faithfully perform...
The duties of mayor...
The duties of mayor...
Which I am about to assume.
Which I am about to assume.
Congratulations. Our next elected official is Councilman DeTulio.
I, Jerry DeTulio...
I, Jerry DeTulio...
Do solemnly and sincerely declare...
Do solemnly and sincerely declare...
And affirm...
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
The laws of the United States...
The laws of the United States...
The state of Colorado...
The state of Colorado...
And the charter and ordinances of the city...
And the charter and ordinances of the city...
And will faithfully perform the duties of city council member...
And will perf- uh, what's that again?
Faithfully perform...
Will faithfully perform...
I should have broken it.
No, I don't. Faithfully perform the duties of city council member, District 1.
Which I am about to assume.
Which I am about to assume.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next councilperson is Zachary Urban, Councilman Urban, come up, please, grab a microphone. Congratulations, Jerry.
Thanks. I, Zachary Urban...
I, Zachary Urban.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare...
Do solemnly and sincerely declare...
And affirm...
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
And laws of the United States...
And laws of the United States...
The state of Colorado...
The state of Colorado...
And the ordinances and charter of the city.
And the ordinance and charter of the city.
And I will faithfully perform...
And I will faithfully perform...
The duties of city council member...
The duties of city council member...
District 2...
District 2.
Which I am about to assume.
Which I am about to assume, so help me God. Thank you.
The agenda on the nomination of the mayor pro tempore doesn't match our rules. We change the rules.
Okay.
We're going to nominate him open from the floor.
Okay, that's all right.
Right.
The floor is open?
No seconds are needed.
No. It's okay, we're good.
Do you need a, do you need a package, or...
No, I've got it. Each nominee ahead, and you know, so I will ask for nominees, and then, um...
And then we've got the paper ballot.
Right.
We're going to have a paper ballot.
Yeah, we do.
We should use the nomination form.
All right, next, Mr. Tim Fitzgerald. Mr. Fitzgerald, take this. I, Tim Fitzgerald...
I, Tim Fitzgerald.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare...
Do solemnly, solemnly and sincerely declare...
And affirm...
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States...
The state of Colorado...
The state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city...
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And will faithfully perform the duties...
And will faithfully perform the duties...
Of city council member, District 3...
Of city council member, District 3.
Which I am about to assume.
Which I am about to assume.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are you shaking?
A little.
Ah, you get used to it. Fain will kill you.
Next is Genevieve Wooden. I, Genevieve Wooden...
I, Genevieve Wooden...
Do solemnly and sincerely declare...
Do solemnly and sincerely declare...
And affirm...
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws...
That I will support the Constitution and laws...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
The state of Colorado...
The state of Colorado...
And the charter and ordinances of the city...
And the charter and ordinances of the city...
And will faithfully perform...
And will faithfully perform...
The duties of city council member...
The duties of city council member...
District 4...
District 4...
Which I am about to assume.
Which I am about to assume.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I guess we're yet to start. We're going to start the meeting with roll call. Will the city clerk please do the roll call?
Jerry DeTulio...
Here.
Tim Fitzgerald...
Here.
Bud Starker...
Present.
Tracy Langworthy...
Here.
Zachary Urban...
Here.
Genevieve Wooden...
Present.
Kristy Davis. And Mr. Pond has excused himself for the evening, he's out of town.
We're going to move on to citizens' right to speak, and then we will do, um, oh no, we're going to do proclamations and ceremonies first.
Thank you, Mayor, we do have a recognition ceremony we'd like to present to our outgoing elected officials, and just give us a second, we'll, we have a video we'd like to, to roll. Video.
I guess we're yet to start. We're going to start the meeting with roll call. Will the city clerk please do the roll call? Going to have some rec- of recognition of our former council members and mayor. Yep, come on forward. This was worth doing it. We got to practice a little bit here. Sorry. Councilmember, it's hard to say that, former mayor DeTulio. You know, I've known this guy for four years, and I, he can be very proud to turn over the baton, because, baton, did I say that right?
Gavel.
Gavel, thank you, the gavel, because he has put in some good years, eight years actually, as mayor. I remember, right in the beginning, he said to me, no matter what, I don't want them to say that I didn't do anything. Well, everybody knows he did a lot of stuff, he's one busy guy, absolutely, and you can be very proud of your eight years as mayor, as well as your previous service as a city councilman.
Thank you.
And it's been a pleasure to work with you. Joey Demat, Joseph Demat. This is, this is a guy that smiles a lot, and he talks a lot, and he's been a great councilman, it's been a great pleasure working with you, Joey.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you. Mike Stites. Mike, I don't know how the citizen of Wheat Ridge is going to keep up their weeds without you reminding them. And he, he started the phrase, buy it, find it, find it, find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge.
Which better go on with somebody else.
Yeah, we better, we better keep up this tradition.
Every meeting.
Gosh, how long have you been at, on city council, 10 years?
10 years.
10 years. He's put in some darn good time for our city, and thank you so much, Mike.
But I've enjoyed all 10 years.
Good. I get to keep that one. Davis Reinhardt. Hi, Davis.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you very much. Davis, Davis is our thinker on the crowd, he, he has got one heck of a...
Thinker on the crowd.
Thinker, drinker. Sometimes we would go have a little tiny sip of wine after a meeting, or maybe a little sip of beer, but Davis, we're going to miss you, he, he is a great contribution, uh, he's really a brilliant mind, and has done a lot of good service for the city of Wheat Ridge.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. It's good. All right, thank you. What is that, door jester? Oh my God. Okay. Tara. Right, right. Do I whap the thing? Yeah. We're gonna call to order here pretty soon. Right, uh, the rest, those of you who aren't staying, could you please step out into the hallway? Cause we are gonna go ahead and conduct the meeting. Thank you in advance. Alright, at this time in the evening, we, we start with the citizen's right to speak. Citizens who wish may speak on any matter not already on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes and sign the public comment roster, which I already have. Citizens who wish to speak on an existing agenda item, please sign the general agenda roster and appropriate public hearing roster before the item is called to be heard. So, you're all lined up and may I have the first person, please? And please give your name, address, and spell your last name for the record, please.
My name is Eric Wilson, that's W-I-L-S-O-N. And my address is 3743 J Street. And I'm just here to announce an event that's coming up this Thursday. It's co-hosted by Live Local Harvest and the Wheat Ridge Grange. It's a, it's called Sharing Food and Stories. And it's gonna be a great opportunity for the different generations of Wheat Ridge to come together, share food and a potluck, and also to share stories about Wheat Ridge's heritage and also its present and future. So, hope to see you there. It starts at 6:00 PM, that's this Thursday, the 21st. And thank you to council for supporting Live Local Wheat Ridge events. Oh, it's at the Wheat Ridge Grange, which is near Wheat Ridge 58 School and behind Wheat Ridge Cyclory.
Thank you Eric. Next person.
My name is Tara Jan, T-A-R-A-J-A-H-N. And my address is 3620 High Court. And first of all, congratulations on everyone's new seats and we're happy to have you all. I'm really glad Eric just announced the sharing food and stories, cause I've waited four years to be able to see the inside of the Grange, which I'm really excited about. I also wish I had brought this thank you card earlier, but, cause one of the council members is no longer here. But this was, we wanted to express from Live Local Active, thank you for, for council members who, who supported a team of about 25 community members participating in the Farmers 5000 Race at the high school. And so, thank you for council member, now mayor Jay Reinhardt, Ms. Councilmember Davis, and Minister Starker. So, this is a thank you note. It was signed by as many of the runners as I could find, including one on the very front. So, this was a, it's extra special and I'll pass this around so you guys can see that. I wanted, two other announcements. We have a big family bowling event at Wheat Ridge Lanes on Sunday from 2:00 to 4:00, everyone's welcome. There's gonna be music and crafts and it's just gonna be a fun way to celebrate a pre-Broncos game. And then lastly, we have been working with a local nonprofit in Denver to make the repurposed banner bags. We'll be selling those at the Sharing Food and Stories and then as many events until we run out. So, come get these, thank you.
Thank you. May we have the next person? Your name, address, and spell your last name, please.
My name is Eileen Kratzler, E-I-L-E-E-N. My last name's K-R-A-T-Z-E-R. I live at 2825 Newland Street. And the zip code's 80214. And as a Wheat Ridge family, we'd just like to thank everyone that voted to approve the budget for the bike lanes on Pierce. We really appreciate it, so thank you very much.
How sweet. Oh, that's so cute. This is, this is cute, these little bikes, it's really cute. And our last speaker, please, Karen?
Name is Karen Thaler, T-H-A-L-E-R. I live at 6161 West 29th Place in Wheat Ridge, District 1. Madam Mayor, council members, citizens of Wheat Ridge, good evening. As I just stated, my name is Karen Thaler and tonight I would like to say a few words regarding my campaign this year. The past few months, I've had the wonderful opportunity of meeting so many interesting citizens while campaigning in District 1 for this year's election. I appreciate everyone who showed their valuable time talking with me during my campaign efforts. Although I didn't win, I gained some valuable insights that I can employ for a lifetime. I firmly believe all things do or don't come to fruition for a reason, and the title of council member for me this year was not meant to be. However, I am abundantly grateful to all my supporters in what I consider a successful campaign nonetheless, and one I am proud of in spite of the outcome. I would like to expand, extend a special thank you to the individuals that received a not-so-nice email regarding me and felt I should know about it. During the campaign season, a District 1 opponent sent an email to a couple supporting my campaign. In the email, my opponent stated their displeasure of them supporting me, as well as my quote, "not representing District 1 very well." Hmm, sounds a little bit like mudslinging to me. And I know a candidate, one, a number one candidate, in particular, who spoke against such actions. Obviously, 300-plus voters felt otherwise. And in the end, that's all that matters. To my supporters, I apologize on behalf of my opponents and security and by their choosing not to confront me and deal with me directly regarding any aspect of my campaign. In closing, I once again want to thank all of my loyal supporters for a great campaign this year. If I decide to run again in two years, I hope I can count on your support in the future. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, let's move on to approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Thank you bud.
Second.
Motion has been approved and seconded to, motion has been made to approve the agenda. Okay. Mr. Starker made the motion and Kristy Davis made, did the second.
Madam Mayor, we have to vote on that because it was a motion.
Oh, thank you very much. Uh, we do have to vote on that. Please poll the council.
Sorry, motion carries 7-0.
We can now open the, for the public hearing for item number one. Mr. Starker, would you please read item number one, Resolution 452013.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's my pleasure to introduce item number one on the agenda. This is Resolution Number 45-2013, a resolution approving a 26-lot subdivision plat for a property-zoned mixed-use neighborhood, M-U-N, located at 5670 West 38th Avenue. Case number WS-13-02 Perrin's Row. At issue in this, the applicant is requesting the approval of a 26-lot subdivision plat for a property-zoned mixed-use neighborhood located at 5670 West 38th Avenue. The purpose of this subdivision is to prepare the property for development of a new residential subdivision.
Thank you. Because this is a quasi-judicial matter, I do have to swear in anyone who's going to testify, be it staff. Or is there anyone, is there a speaker?
We do, we do have the applicants in the audience.
The applicant, as well, will be. Yes, please stand, raise your right hand, and swear. What is, what does this mean?
Swear to tell the truth in this matter?
Swear to tell the truth in this matter. Yes, say I do. Thank you. And now staff presentation. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Mayor, Madam Mayor, and council representatives, I feel honored being kind of the first person to have a public hearing in front of the new council. So, congratulations to all of you. For the record, Meredith Recker, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. Case number WS-13-02 is a request for approval of a 26-lot subdivision on property located at 5760 West 38th Avenue and zoned M-U-N. I'd like to enter into the record, the zoning ordinance, case filing packet materials, and the contents of this digital presentation. The property is located within the city of Wheat Ridge and all posting and publishing notification requirements have been met. Therefore, council does have jurisdiction to hear this case. So, we've got a few new faces up on the dais and I thought I'd take just a few minutes to talk a little bit about what a subdivision does and doesn't do. And I will be quick, so bear with me. So, the subdivision regulations are located in Article 4 of the Chapter 26, which is the Zoning and Development Code. And I found this definition that I've got on the screen here that defines subdivision as "the reconfiguration of a lot, tract or parcel of land into two or more lots, plots, or other division of land for the purposes of sale or building development." Now, in the, in Article 4 of Chapter 26, we have different kinds of plats that we, we use in our day-to-day business. There are final plats, those are, that's a document that divides property into two or more parcels. We have lot line adjustments, which is a document that we use to shift a common lot line between two parcels. We have consolidation plats, and that's a document that combines two or more parcels into a single lot, just like its name. And depending on what the type of plat it is we're reviewing, the approving authority can differ between the different types. For example, we have administrative capabilities to review consolidation plats of two lots. Sometimes we have plats that go to Planning Commission and stop there. And like tonight, city council is the final authority. So, the case we're hearing tonight went to Planning Commission first with a recommendation to city council. What a subdivision doesn't do, it doesn't change the zoning on the property. It doesn't change the permitted uses allowed in a zone district. It doesn't address development designs such as building placement or architecture. And it does not address impacts such as lighting and noise. What it does do is defines existing property lines. It creates and removes parcel lines. It allows the city to evaluate existing street right-of-way or the need for new streets to serve a development. It allows the city to review technical documents for developments such as drainage and traffic, traffic reports. It also defines required easements for a development. A lot of times we'll see drainage easements on a plat and that's part of the reason we process one. It also allows the city to evaluate for perks and recreation purposes. So, that's sort of my, my subdivision 101. Now, I'm just gonna talk a little bit about our mixed-use zoning efforts. In 2010, the city adopted four mixed-use zoning districts with the intent to move away from doing planned development zoning all the time. The mixed-use zone districts allow us some more flexibility with some very specific timelines that a developer can rely on. This was a very deliberate action that we took based on some of the guiding documents that had been approved over the past few years. And we went to, did some extensive outreach, as well as education with the elected officials, Planning Commission, and so on. The first guiding document that supported the mix, the idea of mixed-use zoning was the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, which was approved in 2005. And one of the goals in that document was to make Wheat Ridge once again a community of choice by attracting strong households and encouraging property investment. In 2009, we adopted the city's comprehensive plan, which is called Envision Wheat Ridge. And again, some of the goals in that document were to promote vibrant neighborhoods with an array of housing choices, attract new houses, households, and meet changing needs within the city of Wheat Ridge. And then also to promote revitalization investment in key quarters. 30th Avenue was identified as being appropriate for the city's main street and so on. Why did staff think that mixed-use zoning was such a great idea? Well, we've got some interesting things going on in the city. We're pretty much landlocked and, landlocked, and the mixed-use zoning allows a more efficient use of, of, of space. It also supports new transit-oriented development and existing transit lines. It encourages redevelopment due to the streamlined development process and so on. Some of the features of our mixed-use zonings include moving away from the emphasis on automobiles, being a little bit more pedestrian-friendly and relying on transit. Also encouraging more compact development, again, because we're landlocked, we have the opportunity in certain areas to have higher densities. And so, we have better use of our land through these types of processes. So, with that, I'll get into the presentation. This particular request, you can see on the slide, is about 61,000 square feet in size. It is currently vacant. Located at the southwest corner of 38th and Dupue. So, if you look closely, you can see that 38th Avenue is at the top of the slide along the northern perimeter. And Dupue Street runs along the eastern property line. In 2002, the city installed landscaping improvements along the 38th Avenue frontage from Sheridan to Harlan as part of a streetscape improvement project. And some of the features that were installed as part of the streetscape project includes the landscaping at that very corner of the property with concrete, colored concrete, some decorative ballards and plantings and so on and so forth. There was also a strip of landscaping, which it was installed along the frontage of 38th Avenue with a separated sidewalk and street trees. In 2002, the property was rezoned to what we called PMUD, which stands, stood for Planned Mixed Use Development. And it was a planned development that included a mixed-use building with retail on the first floor, about 5,000 square feet, with some condominiums above that, and then a series of row houses for a total of 20 residential units. Times being what they were, the development did not go forward and it has, the property has remained vacant since that time. This is a little bit hard to read. I know it looks like a patchwork quilt, but what it represents is the city's zoning map. So, again, you can see the site located at the southwest corner of 38th and Dupue. The blue color in that area stands for mixed-use neighborhood, which was a zoning that the city staff undertook in 2012. And we did a city-initiated zoning along the 38th Avenue corridor for most of the properties from Sheridan to Wadsworth. Other zonings in the area include, to the east, sort of the greenish color stands for planned development. To the south, we've got, we've got some R3. Both of those properties are developed with high density, high-density development, multi-family. So, taking a look at some of the slides. Here I was standing at the southeast corner of the property, looking northwest towards 38th Avenue. The street over on the right-hand side of the image is Dupue. So, now I'm just a little bit closer to the 38th Avenue intersection. You can see the, the signalized intersection where it meets 38th. This is looking northwest again towards 38th Avenue in the background. And then you can see some of those streetscape elements at the corner that were installed as part of the city's streetscape project. Now, I'm looking back southwest. You can see the existing multi-family development to the south. Again, another shot looking south on Dupue. Again, we've got further south on 38th Avenue, some, some of the high-density residential in the neighborhood. And then this is looking east on 38th Avenue towards the streetscape that was installed as, again, part of the project. We've got a separated sidewalk with a, a row of street trees, pedestrian lights, and so on. So, the plat we're looking at tonight is a three-page document. I like to call the first page the declaration sheet. And it contains kind of the boilerplate stuff that we always see on a plat document. Things like the legal description, there's signature blocks for the owners and for the mayor to sign. There's usually some notes in there relating to easements and detention pond maintenance. There is also a note included on that front page regarding the common maintenance of elements in the subdivision. This is the second page of the plat document. And it's sort of the heart and soul of the document. It does contain the layout of the subdivision. Again, it depicts 26 parcels. Again, it depicts 26 parcels, which will accommodate 26 new residential units. You can see that the street or the looped driveway system that comes in off Dupue in that patterned denotation. And again, there will be two access points off of Dupue, one further north and one further to the south, with no vehicular access shown to 38th Avenue. That interior drive, if you look closely, you can see that the lot lines sort of overlap into it from the lots that are adjacent to it. This is going to be a private drive that will be privately maintained by the homeowners in the development, and we have included language to make sure that there are adequate provisions for maintenance of the fire lane and so on and so forth. We do show pedestrian links that come from the interior of the site out to 38th Avenue. So again, 38th Avenue is up here at the top. We've got a pedestrian link that comes in from the center of the subdivision to 38th on the very western side. There is one at this location, and then another one further to the east. And of course, there's existing curb gutter and sidewalk along both Dupue and 38th Avenue. Let's see, tract A, which is this large piece in the center, will serve as detention pond for the development. It will also provide some open space amenities, a dog-walking area or what have you to serve the development. The homeowners association will be responsible for maintenance of all the roads, parking, and sidewalk areas, exterior of the units, and the detention pond. And because of that, staff will want to review the HOA covenants to make sure we've got adequate provisions so things don't fall back to the city for maintenance. The final sheet of the development is essentially, the third page is serving as a vacation document. As I indicated earlier, in 2003, there was a zone change and a plot approved for a similar type of development with 20 units. And so what this page is doing, even though the development wasn't ever built, we still had a plot that recorded, that we recorded that had certain easements on it that we need to vacate. So there's some drainage easements, there's also a sanitary sewer easement, and then of course, all those old lot lines will go away. All of the agencies that we've been working with have indicated that they can serve the development with certain upgrades at the developer's expense. Renewal Wheat Ridge has expressed that both the plot and the proposed development are consistent with the urban renewal plan. Wheat Ridge Sanitation District has an existing easement for a main on that third page, which is being vacated. Wheat Ridge Fire can serve the development. The interior drive must be maintained as a fire lane, and I believe there's two additional hydrants that will be installed as part of the development. Wheat Ridge Police can serve the new homes. Wheat Ridge Public Works has reviewed the plot and the drainage plan and report, and both documents have been approved. And finally, Xcel Energy can serve the property. Anytime that we have a residential subdivision, it allows the city to review the proposed development with regard to needs for parks and recreation purposes. Typically, in Wheat Ridge, the amount of land area we're talking about really isn't enough to have a full-blown park dedicated, so usually that ends up being a fee-in lieu of dedication that goes to the Parks Department for either acquisition of new parks or upgrades in existing parks. In this situation, when the subdivision plot came in in 2002, there was a fee of $13,800 that was negotiated with the Parks Commission and City Council. And while the fee is substantially lower than it might be in today's numbers, staff has agreed to honor this decision, and the applicant has agreed to increase the cash payment to the city to $17,000 to compensate for those additional units. Planning Commission reviewed this request at a public hearing held on October 17th. It did give a recommendation of approval. There were, I believe, three conditions included in your packet, and those had to do with the parks fee, the addressing on the property, a signature block for the sanitation district, and then review of the HOA covenants by staff. So, staff is recommending approval. We've concluded that the proposed plot and associated development is consistent with the city's vision for 38th Avenue and the mixed-use neighborhood zoning. We've concluded that all requirements of the subdivision regulations, which is Article IV of the zoning and development code, have been met. And finally, that all responding agencies can serve the property with upgrades at the developer's expense. So that concludes my staff report. There were three conditions of approval that were included in your recommended motion.
Thank you. Is there any additional staff presentation?
None from staff at this moment.
And an applicant presentation?
Yes.
Could you give your name and...
Adjust this up here. My name is Richard Onslager. Last name is spelled O-N-E-S as in Sam, L-A-G-E-R.
And your address?
Pardon me?
Your address?
Address is 4041 Nassau Circle West, Inglewood, Colorado, 80113. Madam Mayor, Council, appreciate you allowing me to present this plan tonight. It's been a long and winding road to finally get here. We had a big crowd tonight, all those big smiles out there. I think the only thing I'd be concerned about is it was all the outgoing council members that were smiling so broadly, and might be careful what you wish for there. I will just give you some quick, brief comments on my history with the property, and I'm available to answer questions, as well as have the home builder, who is contracted to buy these home lots and build these homes, is here with us this evening as well, and may be able to answer any specific questions you have. I've owned this property for well over 10 years, probably going on 14 years. Bought the property originally to build a gas station on the property. That was my family's business, and my primary business is gasoline convenience stores. Bought the property, and doing a little bit of research and talking to the city, and kind of came to the conclusion, number one, is 38th Avenue did not need another gas station. However, we still looked at some ways to try to make something work. We looked at an early mixed-use project that actually would have been a gas station and laundromat with multifamily attached to it with for-rent, affordable housing. I learned and heard very clearly and very promptly from the city that that was not their vision for 38th Avenue, and rightly so. And we turned around, we looked at it a little bit, and we saw what the city had planned in terms of making 38th Avenue this pedestrian corridor and kind of this new urbanism approach to things. So we went back to the drawing board, came up with a plan that Meredith alluded to earlier, which was 8,000 square feet of retail and 12 townhomes and eight loft units above. We actually spent the time and money to write the mixed-use zoning code for the city of Wheat Ridge at the time. No such code existed, and we actually spent the money and the time, quite a bit of time, to get that through this council in order to allow that development to go forward. Spent quite a bit of time and money on designing that project and marketing it. However, we're not successful in making the economics work on that. And one of the prime drivers on it was that there was not a lot of demand for the retail space. As we began to market it, we actually had a fairly strong interest on the residential side, but simply could not get enough retail demand to fill that 8,000 square feet at a rental rate for new construction. At that time, we set the project aside, and as Meredith mentioned, the land sat vacant for quite a while. And then, as the economy started to roll downhill, it stayed vacant even longer. However, during that time, I continued to stay involved with Wheat Ridge 2020 and attending the meetings and kind of understanding what was going on up here. It was just several years ago that the city commissioned a study and really looked at 38th Avenue, and I don't know who the consulting firm was, but they basically said that you're biting off too big of a piece of cake to try to get that whole strip redeveloped at once, and you really need to look at it in three little parcels, residential, mixed, and commercial. And it was in one of those meetings and listening to that presentation that it dawned on me, and I'm embarrassed that it didn't dawn on me sooner because most of my business is retail, but is that retail follows rooftops. And what was really lacking in 38th Avenue are more rooftops and stronger rooftops and stronger incomes. There's an awful lot of vacant retail space on 38th Avenue, and we're really not going to see that start to get absorbed until we start generating some new households in the city. So that's what prompted me to look at taking the property to an exclusive residential component. Met with the city, met with senior staff and with planners, starting about 14 months ago, and have been through several processes with it. I think what we have before you today is a wonderful opportunity. I think it's at the right price point. I think it brings the type of households that we want to try to jumpstart 38th Avenue. I think it really is the catalyst to start moving things forward and hopefully fulfill a lot of the vision that the city's already spent a lot of time and money on with the traffic improvements on 38th and the streetscape improvements. So, we, as I said, we started working on this plan. We approached a builder here in Denver, Newtown Builders. As you probably know, in the downturn, there were a lot of home builders that didn't survive. Fortunately, Newtown not only survived but thrived, is recognized both in Colorado and nationally as one of the most green builders, and one of the few zero-energy builders in the United States that actually can build homes that actually have zero energy once you factor in the solar components, et cetera. So we were lucky enough to strike a deal with them. They're in position to move forward and start building homes just as soon as we finish the improvements on the underground and the streetscape, et cetera, which we're prepared to do. So with that, I will sit down or answer questions, or whatever the council desires.
Thank you, Mr. Onslager. We have other, we have two more people here for public hearing. Would the additional people, maybe it's not on this one, huh? Okay, here we go.
Good evening.
Could you state your name and...
Yes, ma'am. I am Kevin Puccio. Last name is P-U-C-C-I-O. I represent Newtown Builders, and I live at 3862 Oneona Court in Denver.
Thank you.
And I really don't have much to say after Richard Meredith's eloquent presentations. Just maybe a very brief background into who we are. Newtown Builders is a local builder. We've been in business since 1992. We've built all throughout the metro area, both townhomes and single-family homes, devoted to mixed-use, mixed-income, age-diverse, and particularly environmentally responsible building, which is one of the reasons that brought us to this site. The new zoning that was enacted, the main street zoning, is sort of right up our alley, no pun intended, promoting the sort of walkable neighborhood, is what we feel very strongly about. So less auto-dominated, more about people than it is about the cars. We are very excited about the project. We think we've done a pretty good job of designing it with the help of city staff. And with that, I'll just be happy to answer any other questions or...
The council may have some questions later on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another one for public comment, please. Come forward. Thank you.
Hello, my name's William Lang. I live at 3702 Eaton Street, so just around the corner from this. I'd like to submit something. It's actually a map of the area that...
Could you spell your last name for it?
L-A-N-G.
L-A-N-G?
Yeah.
And you have something to submit?
I have a map of the area.
Okay.
I could do it digitally if I could get, I don't know if this is connected to the internet.
Well, give it to the clerk, please, and she will distribute it. Is it intended for each council member?
Yes.
Okay.
What it highlights is, we heard about mixed-use, and how this is a planned community, and how we want, how the revitalization project, and how that's supposed to really make the city more vibrant. And walking communities do that. And I'm not convinced that this plan does that for this area of 38th. Through the visioning project, through the different visionings, for 38th Street, the meetings I've attended, one of the issues or problems with 38th that was brought up was that it's very segmented, that you'll have a mix, a group of residential, a group of some commercial, and there's no contingency of the whole thing, so it's not contiguous. And that's what this map that I've provided kind of shows. It shows that you have these, and there are some vacant, there are vacant buildings, there are vacant businesses, but not overwhelmingly so. And the quality of those businesses and those buildings isn't that great either. So what we have here in this map is, we can see is that you've got some commercial, then you've got a number of homes, that's indicated by the green, and then the vacant property, and then a little bit more commercial. And by putting this planned community right, or this all-residential, again, this is supposed to be mixed-use, and putting just a full-on 26-unit residential, just further segments 38th Street, it further segments that road. And while it's great that they provided some access to, from this community to 38th, where are they going to walk to? I mean, you have, the buildings that are on 38th are either small, they're old, they're fronted with parking lots, or they're homes. You know, this is a vacant lot, and it's one of the few chances that we have to actually build, you know, some nice new commercial for maybe small restaurants, coffee shops, those sorts of things, that younger people moving into the neighborhood would want to visit. Right now, we don't really have that in this part of 38th. It's hard to cross 38th. I've also indicated where the crossings are on 38th, the crosswalks that you can cross there. And so, you know, that is my biggest concern with this development. And again, this is mixed-use, you've heard us talk about what mixed, you've heard the word mixed-use, but no one's ever defined. That's multiple uses. This is a one-use, this is residential. And you could, you know, and when I asked this at the Planning Commission, I was told there are multiple reasons for mixed-use, or multiple explanations for mixed-use. And actually, there's two definitions. And the real big difference between those two definitions is whether you're talking about a single parcel and having that be mixed-use, or you're talking about a neighborhood vision. And I'll give the benefit of the doubt to the Planning Commission and to our planners that it's, they want to take that idea of planning the whole neighborhood and making a mixed-use out of the whole neighborhood. Well, if you look at what I've shown, the document I've provided, that doesn't, that still doesn't meet that criteria. It's, you're still creating a pocket of commercial, a pocket of residential, and a pocket of, you know, and a pocket of, another pocket of residential. So this, that's, you know, this isn't making it any easier for us to walk along 38th. Again, you're going to be, all those places are going to be, 26 units are going to be adding cars, they're going to be adding traffic, that's all going into this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Can we move to council discussion and questions of staff or the applicant? Mr. D'Atulio?
Thank you. Meredith, I wanted to ask a quick question. Is this project still being funded by about $400,000 of property tax increment?
You know, I wasn't involved in those negotiations. Perhaps Ken or Patrick could chime in?
Yes, the city council has approved a tax increment finance program for this project.
And that's going to be based on property tax, not any retail sales tax?
Correct.
Because there's no commercial retail in this development?
Correct.
I guess the concern I've had from this project from the day one, and I was, at the time I was mayor, so I didn't have a chance to vote on it or really discuss it because I was told not to by some council members, is that when you have a mixed-use zoning, you're supposed to have mixed-use, which is retail, commercial, and housing. And what concerns me is that we're using property tax to finance this rather than sales tax, and sales tax is supposed to be the driving force for mixed-use and a TIF or a PIF or any type of redevelopment. So that's my concern, is that this property's sat vacant for 15 years, had been the threats of a gas station, the threats of this, and the threats of that. And really, what really bothers me about this is the $400,000 of taxpayer money that's going to be going to this project from property tax, is going to be over a 20-year period, which creates an administrative nightmare, in my opinion. It would have been actually, when I had talked to staff, $200,000 was today's money, and the $400,000 is tomorrow's money. And in my opinion, it would have been smarter and safer if everyone knew we would have just said, "We'll give you the $200,000 upfront, we're not going to have you pay certain fees, we're not going to have you pay parks, parks fees and maintenance, and we'll cut the $200,000 now, and then there's no future administrative costs to worry about this project." So that's been my concern, is that we, the city initiated this rezoning on 38th for mixed-use, and it's not a mixed-use development, and it's a "high-density development," quote-unquote, "high-density," right next to 38th and Dupue, which is all high-density from 38th to 35th.
Is there any additional comments or questions? Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Recker. The, is the internal drive...
The, is the internal drive intended to be a one-way drive, do you know?
It actually is going to be one-way in to the northern.
So that'll be a right-in, no-out?
Yes, it is, and then, yes. So to circulate around. Yeah, the drive is about twenty feet in width, which can accommodate two cars.
Okay. But the, but the northern curb cut is a right-in, no-out?
Correct.
And the southern curb cut would be a full movement?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Thank you. I just, I just have a couple of comments, is working with the group at Urban Renewal and also working with the council on this development. I'm actually excited to see a development, a reputable builder coming into Wheat Ridge. I know Newtown is a reputable builder in many sites in, in Colorado, so that is nice to have that here. And, and I also think that this type of housing creates diversity in Wheat Ridge housing stock. So, for instance, I can say, you know, fifteen years ago, when I was just out of college and maybe not ready to mow a lawn and, and deal with lawns and that type of thing, I, there was nothing like this in Wheat Ridge. I actually bought a townhome in, in Denver at the time. And it's nice to see that we have this type of diversity for housing stock for young professionals or even older professionals that maybe don't want to mow a lawn either. So I, I think it creates a nice diversity for the housing stock, supports some of the discussions around the retail or rooftop spring retail, because also, as a part of Urban Renewal, we learn more and more that some of the retail folks that we've worked with or tried to work with, the income, the income in the, in the city right now, as far as, as the demographics doesn't drive a lot of retail, so I'm hoping that this will help in, in pulling in some of the retail that we're also looking for, which would also create more of that mixed-use on that street. So I'm actually excited to see this development.
Ms. Langworthy?
I guess, just make a quick comment. This, this development is, is about three blocks from the King Supers, four blocks from the King Supers?
Correct.
So it, it is still fairly walkable, and I understand that Thirty-Eighth is, is much different now than it was, you know, even three years ago. But there are additional crosswalks over there, additional ways to get from that and around. And I, I still think that we can use this as that, creating that walkability. We have, we're working more towards Uppam and High Court, but this is another way to do it on the east end of town and really kind of build, kind of to end anchors to Thirty-Eighth Avenue and work our way through the whole process. So I do support this development.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I see that quite a few of these lots are about fifteen feet wide. Is that common in this type of development?
I will let the developer, builder, address that.
That is, that is common. We build a very similar product, and we've probably built, I should know the numbers offhand, we've built over a hundred and, over a hundred and fifty of them at least. And we try to weight the mix to, there's twenty-two foot-wide units, twenty-foot-wide units, and fifteen-foot-wide units. And there's six fifteen-foot-wide units in this particular project. What we've noticed over the years is that there is definitely a demand for just a two-bedroom unit that, that is fairly, that is fairly narrow. It's still thirty-four foot-deep, still provides for one space of covered parking, but these actually sell quite well. And another thing that they do is they allow, as you were mentioning about housing choice, a bit of diversity for those that maybe can't afford the larger units. So yes, we've built these quite, quite a bit.
Do you, are you ready to talk about price, about what price would those be?
We're looking right now preliminarily, obviously the market's going to dictate what the price is, but preliminarily, we're looking at mid-twos to mid-threes for all ranges, all segment of the products.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Anything additional? I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm looking for a motion on item number one.
Madam Mayor, if I can get my microphone on. I'm pleased to move to approve Resolution Number forty-five dash two thousand thirteen, a resolution approving a twenty-six-lot subdivision plat for property zone Mixed-Use Neighborhood, M-U-N, located at fifty-six seventy West Thirty-Eighth Avenue for the following reasons. Number one, city council has conducted a proper public hearing, meeting all public notice requirements as required by Section twenty-six dash one oh-nine and twenty-six dash four oh-seven of the Code of Laws. Number two, the requested subdivision has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has forwarded its recommendation. Number three, the subdivision plat has been found in compliance with Article Four of Chapter Twenty-Sixth of the Code of Laws, with the following conditions. Number one, the, the developer paid park fees at the time of plat recordation in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars. Number two, a note with a signature block to be added to Sheet Number One as requested by the Wheat Ridge Sanitation District. Number three, the homeowners association covenants be reviewed and approved by staff prior to the issuance of building permit.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded by Ms. Davis. Can we pull, pull the council, please? I'm sorry.
Discuss the motion?
Repeat the motion?
Discuss the motion?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, of course. Yes, we do now discuss the motion since it's been made. We've had a motion made and a second on it, it's time to discuss the motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, even though I have no problem with Newtown Builders, I'll be voting no on this because of the financing or lack of financing of a four hundred thousand dollar, twenty, twenty-year debt the city's going into, also the fact that there's no sales tax or commercial component to this project. And I think that this part of town has plenty of two-bedroom, one-bath units at two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars in single-family homes that are there. I don't see where we're at, really adding anything to our housing stock that's going to make it more unique than what we have right now. So at this time, I'll be voting no.
Any additional comments? All right, let's pull the council in, please. Got to get used to my new button.
Sorry, it's been such a long time. Motion carries six to one with Councilmember D'Tooleo voting no.
So the motion passes, she'll... Right. Okay. All right. We're moving on to election of mayor pro tem. The floor is open for nominations for the position of mayor pro tem.
I would like to move for Kristi Davis to be mayor pro tem, if she would so accept.
A second isn't needed. Do we have any other nominations? No other nominations? Well, we don't exactly have to take a ballot then, do we? No, we just vote. Then let's go ahead and vote.
If that's the case, what I would do, since you only have one nomination, as Mayor indicated, you can skip the paper ballot that suggests...
Skip the paper ballot, right.
Who then should be moved, seconded, and appointed by...
Yeah, all right.
Majority vote, so I'd take another motion now in a second.
Our next motion then will be to, to appoint, and then, then we'll need a second to appoint.
I move to appoint Kristi Davis as mayor pro tem.
And Mr. Fitzgerald has seconded?
Second, yeah.
So I guess we'll pull the council.
They have ballots in their pocket.
We don't need to vote.
We don't need them.
Okay. All right.
We need to revote.
Motion carries six to one with Councilmember D'Tooleo voting no.
Congratulations, Ms. Davis. We're going to move on to City Managers Matters.
Thank you, Mayor. All I have tonight is I would like to welcome the three new council members and look forward to working with you all.
City Attorney's Matters?
Exactly what he said. Thank you.
Kind of a lazy way of doing it. Elected Officials Matters, let's just go, Genevieve, do you want to start? I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to congratulate the new council people and welcome you and the new mayor to, welcome to municipal government. Enjoy your next four years. I also wanted to tell you that I'll be out of town, starting tomorrow through the end of the week, at the Fall Municipal Clerks Conference. And if you need anything, just contact Bruce. He can certainly help you with anything you might need from the clerk's office.
Ms. Wooden?
Thank you, happy to be here.
That's brief, Ms. Langworthy.
Well, we won't be here next week, so hope everybody has a safe and happy Thanksgiving, because there won't be a meeting before then, our tree lighting ceremony is coming up, December first?
Eighth, December eighth.
December eighth, okay, I had it wrong weekend on my calendar. So December eighth, and that's from three to seven? Woo-hoo, okay, so we'll be meeting at, the ridge at Thirty-Eighth, December eighth, from three to seven, to light a tree. There will be lots of festivities, so come and visit us. And that's it. And welcome the new members and, and congratulations, and that's it.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I'm happy to be here and I hope to work harmoniously with the other council members.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you. Very glad to be here and want to congratulate the rest of the other council members who are elected and look forward to working with the, the city staff and the rest of the council on making Wheat Ridge a great place to live and if you can find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge.
Good for you, you're in the right chair for that. Ms. Davis?
Thank you. I'd like to make a note of the, and thank the outgoing city council and express my gratitude, because it was two years ago that I was a new council member. And they were very helpful and great mentors to me, so I wanted to thank the outgoing council and appreciate their, their work. And I also want to welcome and congratulate the new, new council and look forward to working with you. I'd also like to thank, thank you for the appointment to mayor pro tem. It's going to be a new position, but I will learn it quickly and learn it well, and I, I appreciate it and thank you. And happy Thanksgiving.
And Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I would like to say congratulations to the members, the new members elected to this dais tonight. I would like to say thank you to all of their opponents who ran against them, who came, you know, left their homes at night and walked the streets and talked to the public, and that's the way that we create a good, a good democracy and increase our, our public support for our government is for people to take part of it. And to, to all of the people that ran and didn't win, you were certainly winners, just for having tried. I would like to say thank you to the other members who sat on this dais in the two years since I've been here. They taught me a lot and they certainly fulfilled a great role in public service. I would like to, to thank all of the voters who took the time to become informed and to mark their ballots and show up, actually maybe not show up at the polling place, but in a figurative sense, but marked their ballots and participated in our democracy. We have, we have a number of exciting challenges in our city. We have, we have issues with Thirty-Eighth Avenue, we have issues with funding our government, we have other, other large issues that, that I'm really looking forward to working with my other counselors and the new mayor and, and all of our citizens to, to address these issues. And I want to say, have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
And Mr. D'Tooleo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I want to welcome you. Congratulations on being our new mayor. Also wanted to thank and congratulate Genevieve and Tim and Zach for being here tonight and looking forward to working with everybody on city council the next four years. It was, also want to thank the residents of District One for once again having the confidence and the faith to bring me back again for another four years. So I'm looking forward to moving forward on a lot of different projects and happy Thanksgiving.
Well, let me say that, that is a pleasure to be here. I'm, I'm very excited about the council that we have. There's a lot of talent up here and I'll be tapping it a lot. And Mr. D'Tooleo, hopefully you'll keep, keep the mood, the meeting going on, helping, helping me prompt through it. And I know you'll all forgive me for that, and eventually I'll smooth out. But I'll say, I am very excited about the people that I'm going to work with. I, I particularly want them to look at their, their desires to, to bring the city forward as, as they thought about those when they were running for council. And I want to encourage that and maybe have some kind of special projects for each and every one of them that we can help this city soar. And we're going to do a study session now, right?
Oh, Madam Mayor.
And I'm going to close the meeting, I need a motion, I'm sorry.
Madam, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, I didn't realize it was going to be a study session tonight, so I won't be here for the study session, but I'll be here, my bell's on for the next meeting.
December second, I think it is, isn't it? I'm going to, you need a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Do we adjourn? Meeting is adjourned, then, do we need a second on that? Thank you. Yes, we need a second.
Second.
All right, thank you.
We adjourned, but we, I, I made a motion to adjourn with second by Mr. Starker, so we have to vote on the motion to adjourn.
Can we vote on that? Please pull the council.
Motion to adjourn carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need a break? Another part here. Um, staff reports, do we have anything?
We do, Madam Mayor, thank, we have, um, one quick update from the police chief.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the new, uh, council members. Uh, council will remember on September twenty-third that, uh, Larry Welshen, the school administrator for the Alpine Valley School, and a group of parents came and, uh, complained to council in regards to a police action that occurred at their school on September ninth. Uh, council was also where, I think, from Division Chief Lorenz, who was present for that council meeting, that the department had actually initiated an investigation into, uh, the school's complaint, uh, as pertained to the actions of officers on, uh, September ninth, uh, two days after the incident occurred. I wanted to just give council just a, a brief update in regards to, uh, uh, what the department has done, uh, in, uh, in terms of investigating this and the steps the department's gonna take. A council will remember that, uh, on September ninth, uh, the police department at about two o'clock in the afternoon responded to a burglary in progress, uh, to the residences just to the west of the Alpine Valley School at Forty-Fifth and Parfait, and, uh, set up a perimeter and during that response to, uh, that particular call, there was a, uh, brief description that was provided in regards to the physical and clothing description of two juveniles, uh, who were believed to be involved in this. Uh, subsequently, uh, as this scenario, as this call played out, uh, one juvenile was contacted just north of the school and taken into custody, and then a second juvenile who had exited the building of the school, uh, who matched, uh, the brief, uh, and limited clothing description, uh, that was given was taken into custody as well. So, we met with, uh, Mr. Welshen, uh, almost immediately after the complaint was received. Uh, Division Chief Lorenz, uh, on the Friday following, uh, the, uh, the initial call, went to the school, met with him and, uh, and his staff in regards to, to their complaints. Uh, we subsequently took a, uh, a, a complaint from them and did interviews with all of the involved school staff and the students that were involved in, in this particular scenario as well. We also did interviews with our officers, we looked at the dispatch tapes that were there, and, uh, we did a, uh, debrief of that entire call so that we could do an evaluation of what, uh, what occurred and, uh, if we had done anything wrong. Uh, after our review, uh, I'm pleased to tell council that we did an awful lot right on this call, uh, but I'm also disappointed to tell you there were some things we could've done right, and we didn't. So, I've initiated the following steps to address that. Uh, we're doing a review, uh, of our policies and procedures as pertains to calls for service that are called in as in-progress crimes. Uh, we're also doing a review of our tactics and, uh, part of that review is going to involve a debrief, uh, with all of the involved employees in that situation to go over, uh, what we've since learned in this. One of the difficulties of responding to in-progress calls for service is, is you respond to those and you really have limited information. And officers sometimes have to make decisions, uh, and sometimes those are life and death decisions based on really limited information and what they can articulate from, from what occurs in this situation. In reviewing this and certainly from the lens of 2020 hindsight, we think that we could've done a better job, so we're going to look at our training protocols, uh, our in-service training, uh, that'll be scheduled for early next year. We'll have a component related to this call in regards to, uh, some of the things that we've learned from, from this incident. And, uh, there'll also be some corrective actions that I'll take as the chief. Certainly those are personnel matters, and, uh, we don't discuss personnel matters in a, uh, a public meeting setting, but I'd be happy to meet with any of you individually, one-on-one, if, if you have questions in regards to this particular call for service, or if you want more information in regards to that. In addition, I'm going to be meeting with, uh, the staff and, uh, the, uh, the parents and the students from the school tomorrow evening at, uh, at the school to go over, uh, the findings, my investigation and the findings and the outcome from this investigation. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions if council has any questions in regards to this.
Uh, Chief Brennan, thank you. I'm sure the council as well as our citizens are, are appreciative of your report. Are there any questions? Nope.
Thank you.
Do we have additional staff reports?
No, that's it.
Okay. So, we can move on to item, um, number one, or number two, actually, Community Corrections, Jefferson County Commissioners?
Good evening. My, my name is Fay Griffin. I'm Commissioner, Jefferson County, District One, and I'm here to introduce our newest Commissioner, Casey Ty, who is Commissioner Two, uh, District Two. But before that, I would like to congratulate all, all the new council members. Again, hello to the council members before, and of course, our new mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Fay.
So, thanks Fay. Again, I'm Casey Ty, I'm Jefferson County Commissioner, District Two. Uh, what I want to talk to you about is, uh, Community Corrections. And what Community Corrections is, is a, is a transitional program for, uh, people who are getting out of prison and transitioning back into the community. It's also a diversion program that allows people to avoid jail and live in a halfway house home setting in the community and hopefully gain some skills that'll help them, uh, become better citizens and hopefully avoid getting into the trouble they've got into in the past. Uh, now, we have got some people here. Ralph Shell is the, uh, County Administrator, he's here. Uh, Lynn Johnson, the Director of Human Services for the county's here, and then Kathy Otten, the Director of our Justice Services section is here as well. And she'll talk to you about, more specifically, about what Community Corrections is, what it's trying to achieve, and who the people are that live in Community Corrections. She'll know that, but I want to talk to you briefly about that first. So, go onto the next slide, you hit the... Right there? Okay. Of course, no good presentation goes on without a shameless plug for the county commissioners. You met Fay. Again, I'm Casey Ty. Uh, Commissioner Roche couldn't be here tonight, but he, uh, would also extend his congratulations to the, uh, the new people on the council. And, uh, we're gonna talk to you about the Community Corrections again. And where Community Corrections currently is, it's in Lakewood. And it's in a building called the New York Building, which is part of the JCRS, the Jewish Consumptive Relief Society campus, which is behind Casabinita, just off, just north of Colfax. I'll go into more detail about the New York Building and, and some of the challenges we have with that building, and why the, uh, Jefferson County Commissioners are interested in trying to move the Community Corrections function. So, I'll go into that in a little more detail later, but first, I think I'll have Kathy Otten come up and talk to you about what Community Corrections is and what they're trying to achieve.
Good evening and congratulations. It's wonderful. Community Corrections, what is it? Community Corrections' goal is public safety, but it's also balanced with self-sufficiency. It's really important that we keep the public safe, but it's also important to allow those that are coming back from our, back from, are coming into the community either from prison or avoiding prison from jail, to have the opportunity to work and support their families and pay their obligations. They also have to learn societal norms. So, really what Community Corrections is, is that it's that interim step between prison. It's the, it's those, it's the housing or the transitional housing for those that could be going back to prison or could be staying out of prison, or could be just living in your community and can't make it. They could be on probation or parole, living next to you, but can't quite, um, understand or live by societal norms. So, we put them, so they're allowed to take that one step back into Community Corrections to learn how to behave within society. Because we know that about ninety-five percent of those that are out of, that are in prison are, uh, will be out, but it's actually raised from ninety-five to ninety-seven percent at the last study that I saw. We know there aren't very many life sentences, so we know that at some point, they're, they will be in our communities. So, the question really is, do we want them in the community through a transitional housing where we can actually watch them in a safe and controlled environment, or do we want them living next door or just autonomously in the community, um, and left sort of up to their own devices? The Community Corrections, um, Housing Facility or Transitional Facility or Community Center provides a very safe and secure and controlled environment to those offenders who are now, um, learning how to work within freedom. When you live in a structured environment, uh, such as you may with prison or in jail, coming out and all of a sudden having all these new freedoms is scary. And sometimes when people are afraid or people don't know how to live within societal boundaries, they, they do things that they normally wouldn't do. And so, the Community Correction Center gives them the opportunity to learn how to live within the norms. They, they learn how and what the expectations are. While they're there, of course, they have to, um, requirements are that they have to work, so they have to pay their taxes, they have to pay their way, they pay their child support, uh, they pay restitution. And while they're there, because they may have specialized needs that they wouldn't get if they were normally either in prison, in jail, or just living in the community, they're, it's, they're in a much safer environment, so they have specialized treatment. If they've got spotty work histories or they've never had a, had a job, they have the opportunity for employment or to learn a skill. They could also get, um, education. Uh, they also, they get GEDs. They spend thousands and thousands of hours, um, in GE, in GED classes or adult basic education classes, learning how, um, and what to do, how to educate themselves. There are also housing services, so we help provide them transition back into the community. And please remember that these are, these are all, um, these are people that are coming back into our communities because they, they came from our communities. They're coming back into our communities because that's where their families or their friends or their, um, their children live. These are our loved ones. Without, so we say Community Corrections, why? Why do we have Community Corrections? Why should we have Community Corrections? Community Corrections offers us cost savings to Jefferson County. Using a Community Corrections, instead of sending them to prison or in jail, we saved in two thousand twelve, one, over one point nine million dollars. Not only did we save one point nine million dollars, but while they were there and paying their way, they earned two point seven million dollars, which then, of course, went back into the community, back into the community in the form of many things as we all live, whether it's in the grocery or commercial, um, commercial settings or paying child support. They paid over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in child support, over three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in restitution. And the taxes paid between two thousand nine and two thousand twelve was over eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in federal taxes and three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in state taxes. When you think about the one, the cost savings of one point nine and then over one point two million dollars in taxes, that's a heck of a lot better than paying forty, uh, up to forty thousand dollars a year, uh, keeping them in prison. So, they're actually, um, investing into Community Corrections, or into our communities. Oh, I'm sorry. So, again, why? We ask that question. A lot of people ask that question. Why would we want it? Why do we need it? Why is it important? Without Community Corrections, without a transitional facility, some offenders would be living in the community anyway. They live anonymously. Um, they live with very little supervision and certainly not intensive supervision. Many don't, um, don't get the treatment that they need and, um, are just sort of meandering in the community because they're not really sure what to do. What the Community Correction Center does is it provides a safe and secure living environment for not only the residents, but for themselves and their families. They're monitored, um, daily, they're held accountable for their actions, and they're intensely supervised. And this is something that when someone's coming out of prison and coming back into the community, or somebody that's already in the community but can't make it in the community as they live autonomously, they're coming, they, they can, they have the option of moving up to, uh, a Community Corrections facility where they can learn. One of the quotes that I think is so very, very important for us to know, for us to think about, is that short-term public safety is our first and foremost goal. Long-term public safety is vital to preventing future victimization and incarceration costs. When we have people living in the community autonomously without having the opportunity to work, to pay their child support, or to have the, get the treatment needs that, that they may need, um, we could, when they're living there, they, they, we reduce the victimization that we could possibly, um, be seeing. Not only is it important that our, our residents in Community Corrections are, are, are safe and public safety, we also have standards for our Community Corrections facility. Jefferson County's Community Corrections Facility Intervention Community Correction Services, ICCS, is our vendor for, that operates both our men's and women's, uh, Community Corrections facility. They are audited by the Department of, um, Public Safety, uh, the Office of Community Corrections. They're also off, uh, audited by Behavioral Health. They have, they're held to many, many standards, but we're very, very proud to say that they are number one in the state. There are, there are two at number one. Uh, Pure One and, which is a, is a therapeutic community, and ICCS. They have a risk factor of three. And when you can, just in comparison, uh, the risk factor of, of one that is in, that would love to be like, like ICCS, has a risk factor of forty-four. So, it's quite a variance and very polarized. So, we have, so we have a very, ICCS is a very low risk. ICCS also works with local law enforcement to ensure public safety. It's, they have a zero tolerance policy. So, if there's a problem, um, they are engaged with local law enforcement and law enforcement and work very closely with them. But not everybody gets to be in Community Corrections. Just 'cause somebody wants to be or somebody's referred to Community Corrections doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to be accepted. We have a very stringent, um, process. Um, we have a, first ICS, a, a case or person may be referred either by probation or parole or a judge, again, may be referred to Community Corrections. And, um, ICCS will take a look at them and see if they're appropriate. If they are appropriate for ICCS, then they screen them, they send them to, uh, Jefferson County, um, Jefferson, they send them to Jefferson County Community Corrections Screening Committee, which is held weekly. The Screening Committee, made up of law, law enforcement, look at, and community members, look at that particular case. If they're accepted by that board, some of them are mandatory, or many are mandatory, then those that are accepted go further then those that are accepted go further to the Community Corrections Board. Those that are rejected are just rejected. They, they go back in the pot. They're not allowed in Jefferson County Community Corrections. But those that are accepted go to the third step. And that's on the, that's the full board. The full board, made up of law, of law enforcement and criminal justice, community members, citizen members, mental health, different chiefs of police, they look at those cases very, very carefully, and they sort through them with a fine-tooth comb, and they decide whether or not that they're appropriate for Jefferson County Community Corrections. If they're appropriate, then those people are, that are accepted are referred to a judge, and then the judge has an option for sentencing them. The judge may or may not. The Community Corrections Board may or may not accept them. But it's ultimately up, up to the community and to the judge. Just to give you an idea of what I'm talking about, of cases reviewed and those that are accepted, last year, there were 1,770 cases reviewed by the Community Corrections Screening Committee and Board, but only 686 were accepted. That means that 1,084 were rejected. That's a lot of cases that were rejected. And they were rejected because they just weren't appropriate, either by ICCS or for the, the Community Corrections Board. Both the Screening Committee and the Board take their jobs very seriously. So when they look at each case, they look at, they get as much information and detail as we can, because both from probation and from the Department of Corrections, we get their, their pre-sentence investigations and, and the background, so that they know, we know what they are, we know what they're looking, what we're looking for, and the Board knows whether or not they are acceptable for Jefferson County. So the county of the citizens are actually, who are accepting them into the centers. So, again, who are, they're all felons. We're, we're not trying to, we don't play any games here. They're all felons. They're either diverted from prison, you'll hear that certain, they're diverged, so they're diversion clients. They could be probation or, or, they could be parole, probation, that couldn't make it in the community, so they're regressing into a Community Corrections Center. They could be in there for short, short-term stabilization, or they may have mental health needs, or others, that our ICCS specializes in. We have a wonderful, unique program with Jefferson County Mental Health that specializes in helping and working with those that need specialized treatment in mental health. So many times, commute, when we say Community Corrections, which really isn't an adequate, it's really not an adequate descriptor, because people think of the Department of Corrections when we think of depart, when we think of Community Corrections, but it's not. Community Corrections facilities looks like a dormitory, looks like an apartment building. There are no bars on the walls, there are people coming and going, there are people working, everybody that, almost everybody that work, that lives there, the residents have jobs, they're coming and going. But how it's different from your normal apartment building is you don't see people hanging around, because they don't, they're not allowed to hang around. They're monitored, they, when someone leaves, the staff at Community Corrections Facility know exactly where they're going, how long it's going to take them, when they're going to be back. It's relatively quiet, and they engage in pro-social activities. Pro-social, social activities may be basketball, or softball, or whatever it may be, but it's, they're not just hanging around. ICCS has an average daily population of 226 residents. They're supervised 24 hours a day, seven days a week, by skilled professional staff. When we talked about public safety and monitoring, they have 14 headcounts a day to make sure that everybody's where they're supposed to be and where they said they're going to be, so that people, that residents are accountable. The case management ratio, ratio is one to 15 or one to 22, depending on what the specialized treatment is. Our busiest time is three to 10. People are coming home from work, they're going to, they might be working a later shift. Families come in, this is where we reintegrate with families, making sure that, you know, some of those bridges that were burned in the past are now resurrected, because they have to take care of their families. ICCS and Community Corrections is very rule-driven, they're strict, and viol, and violations aren't tolerated. You know what the rules are, just like in society, these are the rules, you must follow them. If you don't follow the rules, you can't follow the rules in society. Lakewood Police Department will report that the, that the, the transports and whatnot that go back and forth, and that the crimes in that area is, they're, they're no higher than any other high-density housing complex. As a matter of fact, it's right next to the art school, and the Lakewood Police Department will tell you that they have more calls for the art school than they do on campus for the, for ICCS, because they have people milling around at the art school, but they don't have it at ICCS, because it is a, it is a very quiet area. That's, for the most part, that's programming, and some of the things that, that are essential in knowing about the program, the program's security, the importance of self-sufficiency, and that balance with public safety. Now I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner.
Thanks, Kathy. So there are currently two Community Corrections facilities in the county. We have a women's facility, and it's in Lakewood, just a little bit north of Sixth Avenue on Sims. And then there's the New York building, which is a men's facility, and it's also in Lakewood. And that is a beautiful old building, the New York building. It's right next to the art school, and the art school is trying to develop their campus. And so we've, we've got some challenges with the New York building, we've got some opportunities with the New York building. As yes, I stated before, the New York building is part of the, the old Jewish hospital. It was built in the early 1900s. It's a beautiful historic building, and it became part of Community Corrections in 1977. And ICCS has been working with it since 2002. The building itself has got a lot of need of repair, it's got a lot of deferred maintenance. And the building is, it was a hospital, so it's great for housing people, but it's not great for programs. So it's, it's been working since the seventies for Community Corrections, but it's not the ideal facility. Also, we're having to look at, putting a lot of money into repairing, a lot of deferred maintenance, I said. So we're thinking, rather than putting money into a building that maybe the, has a higher and better use, we need to look at possibly moving the Community Corrections facility. But let's talk about, a little bit about what Lakewood has going for it. I was talking about there, the building is not quite up to code and stuff, but Lakewood with that art school, they're hoping to develop an art district, and they're hoping that they can maybe incorporate the New York building into that whole art campus, maybe create some more possibilities for development, create some good positive traffic with the light rail being not too far away. So they've got real opportunities. And I'll tell you, Lakewood, they're not trying to get rid of Community Corrections just because they don't like Community Corrections. They really do see an opportunity to develop that neighborhood and have a higher and better use. And a lot of the neighbors will tell you, they're, they are comfortable with Community Corrections. They, they didn't even realize it was there, a lot of them, until we told them about it, because it is relatively well-monitored, well-maintained, and the people aren't allowed to just mill about in the area. But as you know, it's, it's a challenge to try to, to move something like a, a Community Corrections facility. We've been trying to do this for three years. We were looking at one site, we called it the Whiteacre Site. I don't know if you saw this in the paper or not, but we were only looking at this location. We had not decided on it, but it was near a Colfax, just a little bit west of Sims. There's a vacant area there that we're, we're going to build the, the building if we wanted to use that site. The neighbors became very concerned about trying to locate it there, they were concerned about the impact it would have on their property values, they were concerned about, you know, public safety issues. And really, we, we hadn't really had an opportunity to engage the community in a good conversation about it before a lot of concerns about it came up. And we decided to back off on, on, on that location, and rethink about how we were going to introduce Community Corrections to the community and talk, and engage the community in this conversation. So we've been going around talking to each of the city councils. And we've, we've already talked to Arvada, we've talked to the city of Golden, we've talked to Lakewood, now we're talking to you, we're going to be talking to Edgewater. And what we want to do is, we want to solicit support for the program. We want people to talk about what is Community Corrections, is it something they, they can support, and help us when we try to relocate this particular facility. When we talk about where we're going to put Community Corrections, we need to have it, number one, in the community. It has to be somewhere where it's kind of in the community, so these men can learn how to engage in appropriate conduct. It needs to be near a business area, hopefully, so they can have jobs, near a bus line to help them get to the jobs. You know, they, they earn privileges. When the, when the people are in Community Corrections, as they have successes, they earn more privileges. They're allowed to go out and maybe have dinner, or go out and, and do some shopping, but only if they earn that. And then when they do have those opportunities to engage in those appropriate behaviors, they have to check in, they have to have, there's a timeframe, they aren't allowed to just come and go as they please. But the idea being, as they gain more privileges, they start being successful, and they can integrate back into society. So we're hoping we can find a good location somewhere in the county, and we're asking each of the, the city councils, we're asking civic leaders, businesses in the community, to support us if they believe in this particular endeavor, and help us get this moved. And we want to engage the community and talk to the people in the community about what it means to have this kind of facility in their neighborhood, and what we can do to address their concerns and mitigate any concerns they have, so it isn't a problem for the, that particular neighborhood, wherever we locate it. We specifically are not trying to name a location right now. After the first of the year, we'll start looking for locations. What we want to do right now is just talk about the program. We do not have to have a Community Corrections program in Jefferson County. We could choose not to do that, and we could choose just to allow people to transition back into the, back into society through probation or just being released. As you can see there, we need a fairly large area, about 50,000 square foot building, we can retrofit a building, we can do it one or two stories, whatever does that. So that's what we're looking for, those are the, kind of the highlights of the program. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to, to answer them. But again, right now, we're just looking for your support for the overall program, and when we do start finding locations, we'll start engaging the community about whether or not those locations will work.
Thank you, Casey. And Kathy, do we have questions? That's very informative. Mr. Fitzgerald?
I'd like to make comments. I, I happen to be a volunteer tutor at the New York building and ICCS, and this is just a very complicated story. You know, the guys who are there, for the most part, would love to integrate back into society. They have so many barriers, but they're trying as hard as they can possibly try to, to make it all work. But it's a tough place. And, in fact, I couldn't tell you a number, but a lot of guys, a lot of residents will violate themselves back to prison because it's easier there than it is at ICCS. It's an unpleasant place. It's institutional gray. 10 by 10 hospital room from 100 years ago now has six to, to 10 people living in it. Our classrooms have, in that same, or in the same 10 by 10 room, we might have maybe eight computers, all of which are 10 or more years old. This is not a good place.
Well, and you made, you raised some great points. The, the building itself is one of the problems. It, you know, the rooms are not, they were not built for this type of activity, so they're just trying to get by. And when, if you go to the women's facility, I think Greg Kildow, the, will tell you, the women's facility was built new for this purpose, and it provides a much, a much better environment for, to, to be successful. But even saying that, the people in this, in this program, they've, they've created the situation and put themselves in this, and it's a difficult, you're dealing with some people who are going through some tough times. And, and we don't have 100% success rates. I don't want to have anyone believe that, that this is something that's always successful. But they have more success than not, and that's, that's positive. But thank you very much, Tim, for volunteering.
Yeah, I'm not trying to be critical.
No, but thank you for volunteering, I think that's wonderful.
It's a very complicated issue.
That you helped, it is. And, and any neighborhood where we talk about locating this, the concerns are valid. I mean, I don't blame any of the neighbors for raising concerns about it, because you don't want to hurt your property values, you want to make sure your family's safe. So anybody, anytime we talk about relocating this facility, it's going to be a challenge. We have to make sure we do it right to protect the neighborhood and protect the families. It's a, it's a challenge. But I think it's, it's worth the program, I think the program is worth the effort, even though, it'd be, like you say, it's not an easy deal.
Oh, absolutely, it's worth the effort. We, we have joy when somebody gets a job there, because it's, you know, it's a very difficult situation with these guys. As you mentioned, a lot of them have mental illness problems, about a third, maybe. A lot of them have drug problems, maybe about another third. And the people I deal with either don't read at all, or are just barely reading, and they're struggling, they have a hard time getting along in life. It's just, so I'm glad it's there, it's a great program.
And, and as you say, when we come forward, again, we may be talking to you about, you know, supporting the program in various ways, whether it be financially, whether it be just moral support, whatever it is, there's going to be a lot of challenges.
Tracy Langmore.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. I will tell you, or a small comment. I've driven by that several times and had no clue that's what it was. I saw the art building, and I actually thought that was just part of the art building. So I would say that when you drive by it, you don't look at it and think, oh my gosh, there's horrible people there, because it doesn't even occur to, so that's how well it's integrated in the community. So I think that's a, you know, it is a selling point in that you just really don't know what you have. And it's kind of a good thing, you don't want it to be a problem. I, I'm surprised that the art students are more rowdy than the other ones, but who knew? My question really is about that risk, the risk factor of three. You say that, you know, for us, that, that's a really good thing, and that should be a big selling point on moving this, is that, you know, there's other, other Community Corrections that do this, and not as well as this one does. And being able to say that you're, you know, that three is really important, that's not basi, I mean, I don't even know where you get the risk factors, but is it because they don't, they don't have a lot of incidents in the building, and they, they don't really bother the community? Is that what keeps it down so?
Correct. And it has to do with, is professionally run. I mean, they're, they're, yeah, they're checking, you know, on 14 checks a day, they're making sure they know where the people are. But yeah, it's a, it's just because it's professionally run, and they work well with the local police departments, is why they have a low risk factor. But it's not a zero.
No, it's not a zero.
It's not a zero. And so there are, they do have incidents, they have problems where they, the people get into fights, you know, amongst each other, they have people who do walk away on occasion because they're not being supervised. So it's not 100%, but it's lower than any other facility in the, in the state.
Thank you.
And the key is to working closely with the law enforcement.
Mr. Starber.
Thank you, Mr. Teak. ICCS, is that operated as a nonprofit corporation? So, so this is, and, so that's a nonprofit group that runs this?
Yes, it is. Yeah, they're private, they're a private nonprofit.
Okay, private nonprofit.
That the county contracts with.
Okay. And then, do the residents pay for their, they pay for their room and board?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
They pay us.
And is that the, do they, is that the $17 a day figure? Is that kind of what it costs them to be in place?
Greg, you want to answer that? Maybe I, Greg Kildow from ICCS could probably answer those questions better.
Yes, sir, the $17 a day is subsistence that the clients are required to pay, and then the state pays us a per diem for each client as well, and that's about $38.68 a day.
Okay. And do you provide room and board?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald, for volunteering with us.
I guess that was all, that was all the questions I had.
But yeah, but, Mr. Starber, the, the money also goes to programs, the money we receive from the state, we have to provide the room and board for that, the supervision, and then any, any money left over can go to programs. So we really try to make sure we run it as efficiently as we can, so we have money to pay for the programs. And that's going to be the challenge as we move it, the more money we put into the facility itself, makes it tougher to have the programs to buy new computers, to buy, to get teachers in, to, to help with GED and that kind of thing.
Very interesting.
Well, thank you very much for letting us come and, and to take your time. I appreciate your, your letting us, your hearing us out. So thank you very much.
Yeah.
I wanted to-
I wanted to tell council that if, the next time you talk to your state representative, you might mention to them that one of the key things about successful community corrections is programs and staff. There's all over the corrections industry. We've lived through some things last year with incidents with mistakes, and there's issues sometimes with great turnover in staff. Being able to pay for good staff that will stay is an important factor for success of community corrections, which translates to public safety and saving money. And then also money for programs, job education, things like that, because having a good job is one of the most positive factors of success outside of the criminal justice system. When folks don't have jobs, they're very high risk to reoffend. And programs and equipment and stuff like that, it really helps it. So anytime you can encourage, the legislature folks to, not, not chicken out on the funding for, for community corrections, for not only just beds, but for admin money too, because that's, that's another key piece for staff and programming. Appreciate it if you do that, because that's...
Thank you, General.
I think they're kind of getting the message that, yeah, community corrections does what it's supposed to do, and it saves them money, but they just, they can always use, they can always use more.
It's not one of those, it's not much fun.
Yeah. And I would say that the, the staff at I C C S is amazing, what they do with what they have. And the facility itself, lest you get the wrong impression, it does meet state standards, the room sizes and so on like that. I mean, and I, I know, it's not the Taj Mahal, but I've probably toured a good dozen community corrections facilities around the state, and it's not bad, you know? It's, it's, there's worse places, and littler, and crowdeder, and like that, so, you know, it's, it's not a dungeon.
We have something else here to add?
I just want to add, I will leave my card with Mrs. Shaver, and you all are welcome to visit the New York Building or the ladies' facility on about West Security and Sims at any time.
Thank you very much. Okay. We're moving on to floodplain ordinance amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we have some amendments that we need to review with city council. The senior members had just seen this and heard this a couple of months ago already, but we had a public meeting about the floodplain ordinances since then, and we'll give you an update on that. Because of having several new faces on the council, I asked staff to back up and give a brief introduction to this, it won't be as, quite as long as what you heard a couple of months ago.
And our goal here is to listen to what is being changed and giving a...
And we do, we have, we have a schedule proposed for adoption of the amendments, which are required by FEMA, and we have, have to have that done by a specific date. So Mark Westberg will brief that to you, with you.
Right. So as Patrick said, this is a little bit of stuff for those of you that sat through this last time, a little bit of the same thing, but we have some new folks, so this will be new to you. Couple of things, it'll be shorter than last time, the PowerPoint is going to work this time, and, and I will talk slower. So, so, so this, I understand. Okay, so maybe I should say, I would offer to talk slower, I don't have to talk slower.
In memory of Mike, is this three slides long?
It's nine.
Okay. All right, talk faster.
It's going to be okay. That is the first.
Our staff is, is overzealous, thank you.
Although it doesn't want to seem to want to do stuff. Okay, so the ordinance amendments we're doing, there are some new state regulations that were adopted back in January 14th of 2011. We have to adopt those by January 14th of 2014. We haven't just been sitting in the alley by, we've been waiting to kind of do all this floodplain stuff at once. So we don't just always wait to the last minute to do everything. There are some new floodplain maps, this is what we've been waiting for, they were finally adopted by FEMA on August 5th, we adopted them back in '08, so it took FEMA a little bit of time. We have to adopt them by February 5th of 2014, so those are our two real deadlines that we've got, as far as these things go. And then the other thing is we're just updating some terminology, I don't think our ordinance has been touched since it was enacted back in the 70s, or at least not touched substantially. So we have some language that just is not commonly used by floodplain managers today, we're just getting that all updated, so that when someone reads our ordinance, they'll understand it with what they read everywhere else. So it's going to make it a little bit easier for consultants and others to kind of get through it. So our tentative schedule is, we had a public meeting back on October 23rd, we had around 100 people show up, there were no pitchforks and torches, which I was very excited personally about. It was very well attended, I think it went really well, we had a representative from the state and also from FEMA there to talk about some things. We're here tonight, we're going to planning commission, we're going to go to them Thursday night, but that fell by the wayside, they didn't have a quorum. So we're hoping to have a quorum on December 5th, we're working very hard to make that happen. And then we'll come back to you on December 9th for first reading for the actual ordinance, and then the, the actual real thing is on January 13th, which you'll notice is the day before the state regs are due. So nothing like hoping for good weather on the 13th of January. So those are our two deadlines we're shooting for. The new state regulations, one of those is that the minimum free board has to be one foot, so it says, if here's where your flood is, your floor's got to be here, a foot above. We already use that standard, so it's not a change to our ordinance, because we just do a really good job here. The minimum free board for critical facilities, though, has been raised to two feet within the floodplain. And those are things like essential facilities, fire stations, police stations, those hospitals, those kind of things, hazardous material sites, that could be a business that has a certain quantity of stuff, at-risk populations, nursing homes, group homes, daycare, those kind of things. And they're at risk, but the standpoint, they can't like evacuate themselves, they're going to need some help to get out of there. Vital facilities, that's things like City Hall, I'm not sure why we're vital but not essential, but that's, that's just the way that works out. The other regulation, which will be new to us also, is that areas that are removed from floodplain with fill, so you have an area that you're allowed to fill, to then build a house on, you essentially cannot put a basement on a house. They've had some real issues, mostly in Douglas County, with people building basements, and then they flood every time the river comes up, because the groundwater goes where the groundwater's always been, when it was water, and so they just, they've passed that regulation, they're tired of paying for that. So the new maps, parcels in the floodplain, one of the big things we have going for us, and I was at a meeting recently, and I mentioned this, and they all threw stuff at me, because they're, this is a real bonus, we have 55% of our current floodplain is in open space. We haven't run the math on the new maps for the new floodplain, but I think it's going to be a very similar percentage. This is really important later on, just for the standpoint, it keeps people from living there, but it's really important with our points and stuff. The number of parcels, this is not houses, this is the number of parcels that we have, we haven't just had time to do a house count yet. There are 603 parcels in our current floodplain, again, a lot of that's open space, 788 in the new floodplain, some of which is open space. 82 are being removed, mostly along Lena Gulch, but some places along Clear Creek, and 267 parcels are being added to the new floodplain. We haven't done a house count on that, wild numbers, is it's probably between 100 to 200 homes are being added to the floodplain, mostly along Clear Creek, Clearvale neighborhood, just north of the Denver Water Ponds, if you know where those are, that kind of a thing. The National Flood Insurance Program, which we participate in, the NFIP, there's an acronym for you that we'll all learn about, one of the things we do with that, we are a community rating system community. What happens with that is you do certain things as a community, you get points for doing those things, if you accumulate enough points, every 500 points, you move up a class. We're currently a class six, we were class seven when I started, we're now a class six, and we're going to shoot for becoming a class five in 2014. They rewritten the CRS manual, and right now, we're getting maybe 450 points for all of our open space being floodplain, in the future, we get like 700 to 800 points for our open space being in the floodplain. So that alone almost bounces us up that entire class that we need. So there are only eight other communities in Colorado that are class six or above, and those are all places that are Westminster, Arvada, their population's at 100,000. For us to be a little tiny town of Wheat Ridge and be a class six is a big deal. If we become a class five, there's only two people right now that are above class five. Fort Collins is a class four, they're an amazing community for floodplains, because they had that flood back in 97, people died, they really focused their efforts at trying to improve their situation. And Arvada's a class five right now, although I hear they're struggling to maintain that. So if we become a class five, we will be one of the elite communities with regard to floodplains in Colorado. And the big deal is, is that by being a class six, we get all of our residents a 20% discount on their flood insurance right off the top. If we become a class five, it's a 25% discount. This becomes a big deal with what's happened at the federal level. In 2012, which is the last numbers I was able to find on our website, we currently have 177 flood insurance policies with, and you can see the numbers on the premiums, what our annual savings is, they're not insignificant numbers. We've, to my knowledge, never had a claim because of a flooded river or creek, maybe some basement things, but never had a claim. So, you know, we're paying all this money into this thing and not getting a whole lot of benefit back as a city, it's all going to places like Sandy and New Orleans and those kind of things. In 2012, the Bigger Waters Act was passed, it's not Bigger Waters, it's Bigger Waters, they were the two Congresswomen that were behind the act. And what happened in 2012, the goal of that was to make the NFIP solvent, Katrina put them under for the first time truly in the entire history of the NFIP since the 70s, and then a couple of other hurricanes after that, Superstanny just sunk them. So they owe billions of dollars to the federal government, the NFIP does, and they're trying to make that solvent. They're trying to make the insurance rate more racehorse, so if you're lower in the floodplain, you pay a higher rate, if you're higher in the floodplain, you pay a lower rate. It seems like that makes a lot of sense. However, there are some real huge impacts that were maybe not foreseen when this was all passed. Congress is, is looking very strongly at delaying some of the implementation. Most of this stuff was, had a phase in period of four years, and we're going, we'll talk a little bit about the numbers on, on what that means, but it was like you go from where you are today to full rate risk in four years, and it was a big, it's a big deal for some folks. So Congress is looking at trying to delay some of that. What that means for existing policies, there are things that are called pre-firm policies. The floodplains were all mapped in the mid 70s, 60% of our policies are pre-firm, they've been getting a subsidized rate of about $2,300 a year, I don't remember if that's before or after the discount. Most of our folks get that subsidized rate. If, if they renew their policy, or a guy I talked to just did a $14,000 remodel on his kitchen, and that kicked in a higher thing, so his policy was basically renewed, he's now going to have to graduate up to that full risk rate. And for some of these folks, it becomes a very big deal. For post-firm properties, meaning folks that were built after the floodplain was established, most of those guys are playing full risk rate, because we've done a really good job as a city of making them build correctly, where they're a foot above, they're outside the floodplain, they've done things to mitigate that. There are some annual rate increases that are happening. So the big thing with new policies is they all need elevation certificates, and those generally run, we hear in numbers like $400 for a surveyor to come out and see what your floor is. The rates affected by your elevation above or below the base flood elevation, that's BFE, we like acronyms in this business. The amount of coverage and the deductibles, you know, if you want to only cover the, like your first floor of your house, because that's the only part that's in the floodplain, and let your second floor go, you can reduce your premiums that way. If you want to have a $5,000 deductible, instead of $1,000, you reduce, this is like all kinds of insurance that we all have. There are some things you can do to try to do that. The big deal with the rates is that, oh, and if you're, if you're currently in the firm, then you're going to get a new policy, you're at full risk rate right off the bat. If you're in the newly mapped area, like the 100 or plus houses that are going to be in there, in the past, you could get a grandfathered rate, you could get the rate you would have had before the new mapping, which means the out-of-floodplain rate, which is maybe $400 a year. With the, with what's, that's supposed to be phased out starting in late 2014. And what that would do is those folks would start bouncing up at 25%, with whatever the gap is between where they are and where they should be, they bounce up at 25% every year until they hit that. Some of the folks we've got that are now in the floodplain that weren't before, they built responsibly out of the floodplain now they're in, have basements. Your lowest finished floor is your basement in that case, it's not your first floor, it's your basement. And so they're, they've now gone from main B being a foot or two above the floodplain or out of the floodplain, to now having their basement being six or seven feet below. I don't know where the cutoff is, but I think there's a cutoff where they stop increasing your rate, but if you're three or four feet below the floodplain, your insurance policy might be 10 grand a year, depending on all the other variables. So, you know, for some, some of the folks that are in the floodplain, their insurance per month could be equal to their mortgage payment. So this is a big deal, which is why, as staff, we're really concerned with trying to reduce the, or increase our, our class. So the what can be done thing, this was very popular with, with the crowd when we talked to them. The things property owners can do to reduce their stuff is to lower their coverage, only cover the areas that are actually going to get wet maybe, or do higher deductibles. They can do mitigation, they could literally go raise their house. The examples we've seen on the FEMA website, you maybe spend 30 or 40 grand raising your house, but if you go from three feet below to three feet above, that's a fairly extreme example. You raise your house six feet, have a walkout garage or something, you know, then your insurance rate goes from 10 grand a year to like 400 a year. So, so that's one of the things, and that pays off that raising the house very, very quickly. So that's one of the things that can be done. And FEMA does have some grants and stuff that, that might be available to help folks do those, or some very low interest loans, seems like every loan you get these days is pretty low interest, but there are some things that can be done. You can do things like, if you've got a house on a crawl space, you can add some vents to the crawl space to allow the water to flow through, helps reduce your rates, and honestly, that last one seems like an absurd idea, but people have done it. People have filled their basements in order to, you know, count their first floor, forget it, that 10 grand a year ain't worth having that space down there, I'm going to fill my basement and be done with it. What we can do as a city of Wheat Ridge, is we can do what we've been doing, is work on increasing our CRS rating, through a little bit more time and effort from staff. We provide technical advice, our building department is actually pretty well-versed in this, both our chief building official, one of our inspectors were, were floodplain types at their previous job, so they've got a lot of knowledge, we're trying to get more knowledge on the public works end of things. And the other thing we can do is fund mitigation projects with all the money we don't have. So that's the other thing we do. We've identified some projects on Clear Creek, right around the Clearvale neighborhood, which is the car estus kind of thing, down there at 46th, just south of the interstate. You know, for two and a half million dollars, we could probably get most of those people either back out of the floodplain, or greatly reduce the elevation and, and help them out a lot. We don't think we can get FEMA grants for that, because we just don't get wet often enough, it's a catch 22. They got to pay insurance, but we don't get wet often enough to be able to get a FEMA grant. We probably can get some participation from urban drainage, in the past, that's generally been about a 50/50 kind of deal, where we could, you know, we pay a million a quarter, they pay a million a quarter, we work with them to do the project then, and we let the experts at urban drainage take care of this, instead of, instead of us poor street and drainage guys that we have at city. So that's the kind of, the kind of things that we can, we can look at to try to help things out. So that was faster, and I do think I talked a little slower. And the PowerPoint worked this time, so, so I'm really, I'm really happy that PowerPoint worked. I have all of the other slides we had before in there, if people are interested, you're probably not. So the, the bottom line is, we're going to, we're going to charge forward with this, and we'll come back and see you in December for the first reading, and then in January for second reading, we'll implement all this stuff. And then the floodplain open house that we had, which again, was really successful, we think, we're going to probably make that an annual thing, because I can get 36 points for it, and that's, you know, 10% of the way, almost between, between classes. So we're looking at staff at some things we can do that don't take a lot of money or staff time, that we can just take credit for a lot of things we are doing, to keep trying to bounce that rating up, so we can just save people, get as people as big a discounts as we possibly can. And if you're interested, the CRS manual is 614 pages, very, very light reading, very light reading. I've only read 400 pages, because I didn't read the coastal stuff and the stuff about repetitive losses, because we have no losses, so I don't have to read that part, so.
Well, we're all dying to read that manual, aren't we?
It's good stuff. Let's not, let's not do that.
I find it impressive you know the page number, though.
It's tough. Well, I counted, because I was interested. How awful is this going to be?
Ms. Langworthy?
I just have a, well, I, not so much a question as a statement, I think the last urban drainage that we've done is over there by the light rail, or commuter rail?
We did. The city was responsible for funding up to 1.5 million as part of the commuter rail line, and so we identified a drainage project up there, and, and you're right, Tracy, we were able to work a deal with urban drainage, so they, they picked up half of that, the city picked up the other half.
And are we, is it completed?
That, no, not quite.
It's not finished yet. The, the RTD is working on the pond that the big pipe goes to, a big pipe, it's a six-foot by nine-foot box or something absurd like that. I can, well, I can't walk down it, but most people could. And then in our portion of this, of the thing, most of it's a big pipe. It ranges in size, but I understand they're working their way towards Tabor Street from the east, so they haven't quite gotten to Tabor, as I understand it, but they are, they are charging down the path. They hope to finish here, I think, within a month or two, so that'll all be done.
And we just hadn't heard an update on it, and I know that that started some time ago, but I knew that, okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Urban?
With respect to the most recent flooding, my understanding is Jefferson County has declared a disaster area. Does that make us eligible for any ER money or any kind of emergency relief fund?
You know, we didn't, we didn't, we dodged a serious bullet on that one. We did have a, what I think of as a 100-year event, probably really close to it, localized. We had the hail and about two and a half inches of rainfall in an hour is what I recorded at home. And also they recorded 38th and Kipling at a gauge there. So we had almost a 100-year event with, on that thing. And we had a lot of localized flooding. We had some basements flood, one just down the road from where I live flooded, and things like that. We didn't have no roads washed out, we didn't have trails washed out. We had some, you know, minor issues in places that we've, we've gone and taken care of debris. And Urban Drainage, once again, like they did in 2009 after that storm in July, came and have helped us out with some tree mitigation along the floodplains and things like that. I don't, I know that we've, we've provided some stuff. I know that their folks are keeping track of time that was spent. I don't know if we're going to, if we're going to go after that, or that's...
Yeah, we didn't have enough. We identified, we did have one small trail that was washed out in the parks, but it was, I think all of our damage was under 5,000. And, you know, I think anything above 1,000, FEMA invited us to, to apply for reimbursement, but it's quite a bit of work to apply for reimbursement, so we didn't think it was worth it.
It's painful, is what it is.
Given the length of time it took for them to approve the maps, I can understand that.
Yeah. Plus, we felt, you know, there's, there's other communities that were obviously much more hit.